Okay, I'm going to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order at 7:03 PM. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic-
And to the republic which stands-
One nation, under God-
Under God.
Indivisible- Liberty and justice for all. Okay. Chris, our mission statement?
Alright, at Richmond Community Schools, we provide equality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. I will go ahead with roll call. Jessica?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
You're here, alright, great. Sandra? She's muted.
Mr. Wamsley, can you unmute her, please?
Yep, fine, okay. It's not good to click.
Here.
Sandra?
Here.
Angie?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I'm here, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Still moved?
Sherry, was that you?
Yes. Support.
Jessica, that was you?
Yes.
Okay, it has been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda items as presented.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. It's Chris.
It has been moved and supported, any discussion? Mr. Wamsley?
On the personnel report, we have the hiring of a new varsity volleyball coach, Charlene West. I don't know if she is here, I'm trying to look for her name.
She's here, I see her. She's here, I see her face.
They're over there, so I unmuted her, Charlene, if you want to say something or say hello?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. Hi, very excited, very excited. I'm looking forward to this opportunity.
Excellent.
As far as the other items, the claims and accounts, I had no questions regarding the bills, and then the attached minutes are for your people.
Okay. It has been moved and supported, is there any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Shar, I just want to say congratulations to you. It is always exciting to have a Richmond person. Shar is a Richmond grad, she actually coached for us maybe 10 years ago about. Had real good success as the varsity volleyball coach, and I think it's very exciting that she's coming back. And I am pleased that after these months, we finally have a hire for our girls volleyball program. So welcome back, Charlene.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next is our True Blue Moment, and this is a special one. This is one where we, as a Board of Education, have the ability to recognize our top 10 seniors in our graduating class. This year's class of 2020 is an outstanding group of students. And usually when we do this, I take a moment and I ask the parents to stand up. But I'm not going to make you guys stand up, but if just the parents of our top 10 would wave to the camera for us. This is a big moment for you as well. We appreciate all that you've done to support your students and to allow Richmond Community Schools to educate your students. We know that they're going to do amazing things, and it is because of the foundation they had in their family and extended family that got them to this point. So congratulations to the parents on a job well done. And to our top 10, congratulations on behalf of the Board to all of you. As I said, you are an outstanding group of individuals. It's good to see some boys joining the group of the top 10. We haven't had boys break through in the last couple years, so that's exciting. We wish you well, we know you're going to be successful, so go out and be the amazing people that we know you're going to be. So congratulations again, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Castle, who is going to do all the good stuff.
Thank you, Mrs. Talto. Good evening. One of the highlights of my job is to talk about all of the outstanding accomplishments of our student body. Tonight, it is my pleasure to present the academic top 10 for the class of 2020. The competition to be part of the top 10 for the class of 2020 was extraordinary. With 17 individuals in the class of 2020 having a 4.0 GPA or above. The members of the top 10 are not only academically gifted, but outstanding members of the Richmond community. They've shown a unique ability to consistently maintain academic excellence while also excelling in extracurricular activities, community service, athletics, tutoring, and being positive mentors for the next generation of Blue Devils. While the grade point averages are attached to the students' names, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the impact that parents, siblings, and other loved ones have had on their journey. Without your guidance and sacrifice, these outstanding young adults may not be where we are this evening. To all those who helped along the way, we thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to thank each of you for your commitment to excellence over the past four years, and wish you continued excellence in your future education. Parents, when I acknowledge your student, please say something that the camera will focus on you, and your student can begin. We've got a lot of people tonight, so we want to make sure that we've got focused on you. I will speak briefly about each student, and then ask the parents to place a top 10 medal around that student. We will begin with Amanda Brown. Amanda, could you wave or say something so that we can see you?
Can you see that, Mr. Castle?
Yep. So Amanda Brown has a GPA of 4.06. Amanda is here this evening with parents Kelly Brown and Dave Brown. Amanda will be attending Grand Valley State University, Go Lakers, and plans to major in biochemistry and become a dermatologist after graduation. Her favorite high school memory was dancing her senior year at homecoming assembly with a clown mask on with all of her best friends. And anyone who was there is not going to forget that. Her favorite class was anatomy. She said it was her most interesting class throughout high school. She really enjoyed learning about the body and how it functions, as well as learning hands-on while performing dissections. When I asked what her secret to success was, Amanda said the secret to her success would be her motivation to succeed in education. It's always been her drive she's had. She knows what she's capable of, and never wants to settle for anything less than that. As well as being outstanding in the classroom, Amanda was also an outstanding student athlete, all-academic in the BWAC. At this time, please place the medal on Amanda. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sydney Christensen.
Mr. Castle, can I just stop for a second?
Sydney is going to graduate.
Can I just stop for a second? Just on the screen, does that screen need to be there, or can we have the screen on the students? So we can see them getting their medals? Or do you need that screen?
Yep. No, I don't need that screen.
Okay, can we try doing that then, so we can see these kids? And let Amanda Brown give another big wave, so everybody can see that she got her. There it is, excellent. Alright, thank you, I'm sorry, I just want everybody to have their moment.
Yeah, absolutely, can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so continuing on, Sydney, you've got a little extra moment there in the sun. Next is Sydney Christensen, who is going to be graduating with a GPA of 4.088, with her parents Kenneth and Suzie Christensen. Sydney plans on attending the University of Michigan Stamps School of Art and Design to study graphic design. Sydney said her favorite memory of high school is attending the art awards every year with her friends. When asked what her favorite class was, Sydney said her favorite class was yearbook, because of the ability to work collaboratively with others and create something memorable that will last a lifetime, and that's a rewarding feeling. When asked what her secret to success was, Sydney said perseverance and being able to prioritize what's important in life. Sydney is the recipient of 11 Scholastic Art Scholarships or Art Awards. The Anton Art Center recognition, and has the deal to design a cover of a book for essays through a publishing house. She's done that all this year. She's an outstanding academic student as well as an artistic student. At this time, please place the top 10 medal on Sydney. Congratulations, Sydney.
Thank you.
Next, we have Angelina Ingman. Angelina, can we find you? There you are. Angelina is here with parents Jennifer and Steven Ingman. Angelina is graduating with a GPA of 4.091. She plans on attending Oakland University in the fall to study cybersecurity. When asked what her favorite memory was, Angelina said participating in the Yuletide and Christmas choir concerts at Richmond High School every winter. She said her favorite high school class was any of Dr. Ladd's history classes because of the lessons he teaches, how to write papers, and the funny jokes he makes. When asked what her secret to success was, Angelina says unquestionably her work ethic and ability not to procrastinate, which I'm sure a lot of people in here, including the adults, could agree with. Angelina has received the Michigan CTE Scholarship, as well as being recognized as one of two Richmond High School CTE Students of the Year this past fall. At this time, please place the top 10 medal on Angelina. Congratulations, Angelina.
Thanks, guys.
Next, we'd like to recognize Emily Samerick. Emily's graduating with a GPA of 4.115. She's here this evening with parents John and Kelly Samerick. Emily plans on attending Purdue University in the fall to study pharmaceutical sciences. Her favorite high school memory is going to Orlando for a week to compete for DECA with her best friend. Her favorite class was philosophy with Dr. Ladd. She says although she didn't have much time in the class, it was her favorite because every day we had thought-provoking conversations that pushed people to challenge what they believed and forced them to support their ideas with facts. She said that sticking to her success is not only focusing on school, but also trying as many extracurricular activities as possible to broaden her horizons. Not only is it important in high school to get good grades, but it's also important to graduate as a well-rounded person and get involved in as many various activities as you can. Emily has been awarded the Presidential Scholarship at Purdue, which acknowledges leadership, Christian service, and commitment to parish, family, community, and school. She's a member of the Macomb County All Academic Team for 2020. The Fred Waring Award for Choir or Chorus has a varsity letter for academics, choir, and theater, and is three years gold certified in school-based enterprise for DECA. At this time, please place a top 10 medal on Emily. Congratulations, Emily.
Thank you.
Next, we have Megan Schuster. Megan's going to graduate with a 4.119 GPA. She's here this evening with parents Deborah Schuster and Steve Schuster. Megan will be finishing early college program, the early college program next year, and then plans on attending GVSU, Go Lakers again. Get a business degree, then go further on to Wayne State University, where she plans on getting a law degree. Her favorite high school memory are all the soccer games and the team dinners with her friends. Her favorite class she's taken would be Spanish, because she really liked learning another language and the challenges it presented. Megan said the secret to her success was time management. She studied hard, did her homework assignments as soon as she received them, and this allowed her to be involved in many extracurricular activities as well get good grades. Megan has participated in the Junior Leadership Program through Macomb. Is a BWAC all-academic athlete as well. At this time, please place a top 10 medal on Megan. Congratulations, Megan.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nathan Ryan. Nathan's going to graduate with a 4.135 GPA. As you can see, they're all packed very tightly, we're all within a couple hundreds of a point here at the very top. Nathan is here this evening with parents Renee Ryan and Jeffrey Ryan. Nathan will attend Northwestern University in the fall. It is currently undecided, but is considering a career in public policy, political science, or law. His favorite high school memory is visiting colleges last summer and playing in the band at his upperclassmen friends' graduation ceremonies the past several years. His favorite class is concert band, because he loved performing music in a group, and he really values the skill of musicianship and being able to play musical instruments. When asked what the secret to his success was, Nathan said, "The secret to my success, the passion to learn new things and a genuine interest in learning. If I didn't really like learning about new things just for the sake of knowledge, I don't think I would have been as nearly as successful in my high school career. My love for learning is a core motivation in my life." Nathan is a National Merit Scholarship finalist, a member of the Macomb Area Conference All Academic Dream Team, and BWAC All Academic First Team member. At this time, please place the medal on Nathan. Congratulations, Nathan.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jillian Maximuk. Jillian is graduating with a 4.139 GPA. She's here this evening with parents Jim and Linda Maximuk. Jillian plans on attending Michigan State University in the fall, and has been accepted into the Nurse Scholar Program to pursue a career in nursing. Her favorite high school memory is winning back-to-back state titles for competitive cheerleading. Her favorite class was dance, because she got to perform dances with her friends in front of everyone, have lots of fun. When asked what the secret to her success was, she says she believes the secret to her success was pushing herself to take honors AP in dual enrollment college courses, which allowed her to be challenged and make the most out of a great educational experience at Richmond High School. She's an all-academic state member, sorry, an all-academic, all-state team member, National Honor Society member, and a three-year scholar-athlete. At this time, please place a top 10 medal on Jillian. Congratulations, Jillian.
Thank you.
We're now going to Allison Ingman. Graduating with a 4.143 GPA. She's here with parents Steve and Jennifer Ingman. Allison plans on attending the University of Michigan Ann Arbor to study biochemistry in the fall. She then plans to apply for a research position at the University of Michigan, where she can stay in Ann Arbor to continue her education and hopefully obtain a career researching genetic diseases. Her favorite high school memory is Spirit Week pep assemblies with the surprises from teachers, dances from students, and especially Mr. Murphy's raps. She says she also enjoyed performing with the marching band underneath the stadium lights. When asked what her favorite class was, she said by far AP chemistry course she's taken this year. She said at first it was a challenge for her, but she loved Mr. Trend, his jokes are old stories, and all of the inside jokes the class had to start their day with a smile. It's also prepared her for the next college-level science courses she plans on taking. Allison says a secret to her success is her attitude and mindset. She starts and ends the day knowing that the next day is a new day with new opportunities and challenges. This has allowed her to overcome many difficult journeys and challenges throughout her time at Richmond High School. Allison has received a grant from the University of Michigan as part of the Go Blue Guarantee. Is also a member of the Macomb County All Academic Team. At this time, please place the medal on Allison. Congratulations, Allison.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jillian Sweeney. Jillian Sweeney is graduating with a 4.153 GPA. This year with parent Michael Sweeney and Nanette and Derek Lalonne. She plans on attending Western Michigan University in the fall to study nursing, eventually become a physician's assistant. She said her favorite high school memory are Friday night football games and all the fun she had in the crowd. Her favorite class at Richmond High School is dance, because she was with her friends in class, and not only did they have fun, but also learned a little. She said she would consider challenging herself to be the secret of her success. She says you never know what you're capable of if you don't push yourself, stick to your goals, and accept challenges. Jillian has received the Western Michigan Presidential Academic Excellence Scholarship. At this time, please place a top 10 medal on Jillian. Congratulations, Jillian. And finally, we have Alexis Radzuski. Alexis is going to graduate with a 4.182 GPA. She's here this evening with parents Delin and Ryan Radzuski. She will be attending the Honors College at Oakland University in the fall. It is undecided in her major, but says it's going to be something in math and science, and will either double-major in dance and plans on being at the dance team at Oakland University. She then plans on pursuing a master's or doctorate later in her college career. Her favorite high school memory is seeing the signs Dr. Ladd would print out and put on her locker. Alexis's favorite class at Richmond High School was forensics. She says the class opened her eyes to careers she had never considered before, and solving crimes has always been interesting to her. When asked what the secret to her success was, Alexis says "The secret to her success is never procrastinating and giving 110% to everything she does. This helped her manage a very busy schedule throughout high school." Alexis has received a Talented Scholar Award Scholarship from Oakland University and a Miss Richmond Scholarship from Presnell Insurance Agency. She's also received the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizenship Award, All Academic Award, and letter. At this time, please place the top 10 medal on Alexis. Congratulations, Alexis.
Thank you.
Congratulations, all top 10. Ladies and gentlemen, the Richmond High School Top 10 Students of 2020. Congratulations to all.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Well done, everyone. Again, on behalf of the Board, we congratulate you and we wish you nothing but success in your future endeavors. Nice job, Mom and Dad, too. Okay, we are going to move on. Next item is our presentation amendment to the 2021, 2020, 2021 Middle School and High School Course Catalog. Mr. Bartels, you want to start?
I'm going to put a screen up so you can see what Mr. Bartels and Mr. Castle will be talking about. Give me just a second.
Yeah, sure. First of all, at top 10 there, I remember them four years ago. What a great, great group of kids. Wish them the best of luck, good luck. Very, very, very impressive. What we're looking at here is a simple change, and that change would be having kids at the middle school age, at the beginning of the course, within the first couple weeks, those classes that are taken for high school credit at the middle school level, they would have the option to choose a credit, no credit, or to have it be part of their GPA for the high school. So within the first couple weeks, they fill out a form and let us know if they want credit, no credit, or if they want a grade with their GPA moving on their high school transcript. So we're still going to offer these high school-level classes so they can get ahead in high school. But for those that are, you know, taking risk, or even maybe on the bubble, not sure if they can do it, but they want to take the risk, allow them to take it to get credit for it, to still get ahead a little bit in high school, to open up their scheduling options in the future. So that's pretty much the change, is to give them choice, them and their families.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Castle, your part?
Give me a second here, hang on. I'll find him on the list. There we go. Alright, now, Andy, can you start?
Oh, okay, thank you. I don't see it on the screen, is it still on the?
There it is.
Thank you. So I'll start again here. The first thing we're proposing is that a class that is taken outside of the traditional sixth-hour classroom day or a seventh hour be considered as a credit, no credit course, unless a student only scheduled for six courses. Then the course should be issued a grade, and the grade will be calculated into the GPA. So if someone took a zero hour and then hours one through five and only had those six classes, it would be counted in the GPA. The only time this would be applicable is if a student had a zero hour and then had six traditional classes as well. We're proposing that for that zero hour or seventh course, be credit, no credit. The student and the parent, if applicable, would have to tell us within the first five days whether or not that they wanted that to be part of their GPA, or if they wanted credit, no credit. And the reason we're proposing this is that we had some students, some of our students that were taking the advanced AP and other courses that would get the additional GPA bump. Because they were taking that seventh hour, it was affecting them adversely. So we're proposing that they have the opportunity to take it as a credit, no credit.
Okay, thank you. Does any Board members have any questions for Mr. Castle or Mr. Bartels?
Yes, actually, I do have a question for Mr. Bartels, if you will. If a student decides to take the option to calculate the high school class into their GPA, that follows them into their high school career, correct?
Correct.
So then if they find themselves in high school and they want to retake that class to possibly get a better GPA, would that be a possibility?
Yes. Yes, they can retake it to get the grade point up.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wamsley, did you also want me to propose, to introduce a corral, the Honors Corral at this time, or you want me to wait on that?
No, that's also part of the changes to the course book.
Okay. So the second change that we had this evening is a proposal that the corral be given in honors and the honors bonus that comes with it. We had several different reasons that were proposed. This is a class that has an audition, and you have to meet certain requirements to become a member of this class. This class meets outside of the traditional school day for a zero hour. They have full rehearsal times every other half-day, even on half-days. When there's a half-day, they're in there for a full session. It's a very select member and group that are working in there. And they're also expected to learn and work on sight reading and other corral skills much faster than the basic concert choir. So we're proposing that this be given a honors designation, as well as the GPA boost that would come attached with it.
Okay, is that, is that everything?
Yeah, those are the three.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Just so the Board knows, this was, this was an item that was discussed prior to when school got out, we left for the virus and all of that kind of stuff. So we're doing the presentation tonight, but the meeting that we're going to have on- the meeting that we're going to have on the 20th, the special meeting, we're going to have the approval of this on that night so that Mr. Bartels and Mr. Castle can get it ready and done. So it's ready to go for next school year and they don't have to wait any longer. So just so everyone knows, that's the process we're going to do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels and Mr. Castle.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next is our bond update. Starting out with the Lee School renovation bid package.
Okay, tonight we are here to present to you the package. The bid package is out on the streets, if you will, to start collecting bids for the renovations at Lee Elementary School. So here tonight is Dale Jerome to go over the entire, what will be going out to bid, as well as Jerry McCollum from AUC regarding the, what the board can expect. And the June 22nd, where we would be awarding the contracts for the bids that would be coming in. So I need to find Dale, so give me a second here on the list here. Oh, there he is, not Dale, Dan, I said Dale, I'm probably, I'm sorry. Dan and Jerry should be unmuted. I will put Dan's PowerPoint up in front of you so you have it on the screen.
Okay.
I don't know if you can, you can run it from yours, but we can do it this way. We'll make it work. Can everybody see the Lee Elementary School Design Presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dan and we will go from there. Dan, just tell me when you want me to click the slide.
Okay, well, thanks, Brian. Why don't we go ahead and jump? This is just an aerial image of the elementary school. And tonight I'm going to review what's in the bid package that has been issued to the construction manager. So the next slide is a, an overall floor plan of the building. And what we've done here is we've colored in the areas of the building where we're actually physically going to change the layout that's currently there. So there, in these areas that are highlighted here, there will actually be demolition that takes place and we will, will change the, the floor plan layout of the building. The small blue area and there will be a blow up is some space adjacent to the existing main office suite where we're adding more offices and an entrance into the early learning area in the school. The three red areas that you see, those are all the, the three classroom additions, a two classroom addition on the north side and two four classroom additions on the south side. We are adding some toilet rooms in some of the classrooms and those are the two yellow areas that you can see. The green area is a relocation of the teacher's lounge. We're actually taking a small classroom space and the existing teacher's lounge and turning it into a larger classroom space. So we can take the teacher's lounge then and move it to the smaller space and that's, that's already there with the restroom. In the eight classrooms on the west wing of the building, there's currently a half wall configuration with some, some benches and cubbies on it. We're demoing those out, opening the classrooms all up to one large space and, and reworking the coat cubbies along the, the wall behind where that, that half wall used to be. And I think that pretty much summarizes. If we go to the next slide, you'll see the, the layout of the two four classroom additions on the south end of the building. So real simple layout, four classrooms, each of the classrooms have their own restrooms internal to the classrooms. They have cabinets with a sink next to the, the door into the restroom. And then they have coat cubbies along the opposite wall. Basically, all we're doing there is we're extending the existing corridor and that corridor will just get longer and extend out to those four classrooms and on each of those two wings. The next slide is the two classroom addition and on the north side of the building. And here the corridor says extending straight out actually turns and goes to the west and exits there. And the two classrooms here again are designed to be as big as they can be with coat cubbies along one wall and cabinets along the opposite wall. We weren't able to get restrooms into these classrooms. There is currently no plumbing at this end of the building. So these are the, I believe, set up to be third grade classrooms and so they do not have internal restrooms. These students would use the, the group restrooms in the corridor. The next slide will show the new early learning entrance.
Dan, real quick, I just want to point out this teal area here.
Oh, yes.
Office area that could be used for either a specials like social work or TC or EL as a, it's a fairly large office and you could use a small group with students in there, too.
Yes, thank you. So here we see, as I said, we are taking some of the, the small offices that are sprinkled around the building and consolidating them all to the main office and also developing a secure entrance into the early childhood area of the building. So this will allow you to allow people into the building, into the secure entrance area, but not release them into the building and control who comes in and out through that entrance. Two early childhood classrooms will be on the south side of that secure entrance. And then there will be a conference room immediately north with a principal's office and the dean of students offices.
So in this area, I just want to point out to the board, this area is our current latch key room. So you'll notice there's two doors that are being installed to create a large area for especially those days when we have a larger latch key population or childcare population. This entrance serves as a secure vestibule for those before school and after school pickup hours. So someone could be buzzed in here and they are in this purple area and they can't get into the building. So for security, then there's a, there's a window and a door here that would let them right into the latch key room. So this is one of the, the features that we, that I think is a needed improvement in the elementary school to secure the before school and after school, we have minimal staff in the building.
So the, the next slide, I think you've seen this before, is an image of that entrance into the early, early learning center on that wing of the building. So this is, we felt it was important to have this little canopy out there just so that when people are in the parking lot in the, in the, on the driveway, they'll be able to easily identify the, the location of this entrance. And then the next slide is a picture of the two floor, four classroom additions. Using the same, similar brick and siding that's on the existing building. And then using that big end wall to create a little bit of a design element, you know, just using the same brick that's already there with some blue glaze brick, using a darker brown brick at the bottom of the, of that wall to bring in some of the brick tones from the high school and middle school. We're trying to build the overall campus design as, as well as just the design for the elementary school by using some of the, the blue glass and some of the elements that are on the other buildings. Along with the, the areas that we're changing the layout of the building, there's a lot of, of renewal of the, the finishes of the building. This slide shows all of the areas where we're replacing the existing ceilings. Pretty simple slide shows a lot of ceiling replacement in the building. The next slide shows all the areas where we're replacing the flooring in the building. So all the, all the colored in areas that you see there indicate new areas of flooring. Each of the colors represents a different type of flooring. The, the lighter purple, it's almost a gray on my screen, is the corridor flooring. That'll be a vinyl tile floor. A typical classroom will be a mix of carpet and vinyl tile. The purple areas or blue areas will be the carpet areas and then the red areas will be vinyl tile in the restrooms and around the sinks in those areas. The gymnasium and cafeteria and stage will all be getting a new floor. The old vinyl tile floor will come out of there and get a very nice, we're really excited about the design for that floor in the gymnasium and cafeteria. And then finally, when we do these entrance points to your building, we like to use a product called Walk Off Carpet. It's a, it's a newer product, it's a walk off carpet tile. It allows you to eliminate the, the always clunky entrance mats that, that are always there when you come into building. I always trip on them when I come into a building. So in, in these areas, you can get rid of the entrance mats and put the walk off carpet tiles down. It's a very durable, very tough abrasive carpet tile. So you can, you can wipe your feet off on it right when you come in the door. And, and then you can, and like I said, it's, it's a very inexpensive material, too. So we, we try to use it a lot at any building entrances now. All right. There is a lot happening to this building in terms of the mechanical and electrical system improvements. Probably the biggest thing that, that everybody will notice is that we are adding air conditioning to all of the classrooms as part of the project. So, you know, everybody always appreciates when that happens to a building and it's an exciting improvement being made to, to Lee Elementary. The boilers get replaced as well. And then there are some of the, not all the rooftop units, but some of the older rooftop units that sit on top of the building are being replaced as well. In terms of electrical systems, the lighting throughout the building is being replaced. It will go to, be changed to LED lighting that will, will use less energy and actually provides a, a better performance than, than the existing lighting. One of the nice things we do when we change the buildings out to LED lights is that we put dimmer switches on all the classrooms and allows the teachers to simply use a, a dimmer switch like we have in our homes to control the level of lighting in a classroom. We also are installing backup generators, a backup generator to the building that'll keep your freezers and coolers in operation and maintain building heat during a power outage. And finally, electrically, we are replacing the PA system, the clock system and the fire alarm. So little infrastructure pieces that, that mean a lot in an elementary school. Next slide, I'm going to kind of gloss over, please, Brian, because Jerry's going to cover that in greater detail as part of his presentation. As we said, we have issued these documents and Brian, I believe he posted the full set of bid documents that have been issued to the construction manager for bidding. We have also submitted this project now to the State of Michigan Bureau of Construction Codes and Bureau of Fire Services for Plan Review. That is typically a nine week process. I don't know how long it's going to take in our, our current state. And the other thing is we have started to do design work on the middle school, on the high school and, and the campus site planning at Richmond Schools. So the high school, the, the big component there obviously is the auxiliary gym addition. And then at the middle school, the, the key thing that's happening there is the, the relocation of the main office to create a secure entrance. So we started to work on those and we'll go through this same process that we did on the elementary school with those two projects. With the intent that at the end of September, we're back to this point with, with the high school and the middle school. Does any, I'd like to take any questions if anybody has any, please?
Just, just to reiterate, the, the idea for this is come our June 22nd meeting, that's when all the bids will be back and we will be awarding them and moving forward from there on the Lee School, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, I will close this out. I don't know if Jerry, if you can share your screen?
Yeah, I think once you close that out, I can, I can go ahead and share.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Jerome or are we good?
I don't know if he would answer this or not, but do we know, have a projective, will this be finished before the start of school? Is that the goal, the elementary or?
No, the elementary is not going to be till next year.
Okay, so we won't even start on it until next year? We'll be getting?
No, it's not going to be completed. The completion is the 2021, 22 school year.
Okay, but we will be starting hopefully before the start of this next coming year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Brian, it's telling me the host has disabled my screen sharing, so I think you have to.
All right, let me.
Enable me.
Okay, let me see what I can do here, Jerry. Doesn't give me an option. Let me just do this. I'll just share it, Jerry.
Okay. Okay.
Give me an option and I go to the more button.
No, no problem. It's, it's not, not a, not a real high tech, high flying presentation, so we can, we can do this. Yeah, if you want to go to the next slide, answer some of those questions that were coming up. So the, the process where Dan was at, basically, he completed the documents, got them to us last week. We, we spent the weekend working through, putting together the scopes, getting the advertisement for bid out. That will hit the streets officially tomorrow. The pre-bid meeting, we are going to be doing a Zoom meeting, much like this in our new situation on the 19th. That will be for the formalities of the bidding and the bidding procedures. We, we always want a, a bid building tour, especially when we're doing renovations. But with the social distancing, we are requiring that folks do that by appointment and we're going to limit it to 10 attendees. Currently, we're looking at three or four slots on the 20th to do that. If, if there is more interest, we will make more time available for that. But right now, we're starting with the 20th, three or four different times. That Colleen Kefel and myself will be available to walk contractors through the building. We will be doing a bid opening via Zoom as well. The bids will be due on the fourth at 2:00 PM at the, at the central office there. We will set up a camera properly, social distance with probably Brian, Tammy, myself. You know, we will do that in the boardroom. Then the week of the eighth through the 12th, we'll be doing post-bid meetings with the subcontractors. Typically, we like to talk to at least the low two, depending on how it is, maybe the low three bidders in each category. And that's to confirm scope and confirm that the contractors have the ability to complete the work and, and have the safety record and financial wherewithal to handle the project. We will be providing Brian information throughout that week and then getting the formal recommendation to him for the board packet on the 18th and looking for board approval on the 22nd, which will put us right into our contract procurement from the 23rd till July. Then we'll be in material procurement and mobilizing on the additions in August. So we need to get started on the additions in order to get them in for the fall of next, of 21. We can't really fit that into the summer. So we will be working on the ends of the building while the building's occupied with proper security measures and proper safety measures in place. So if you want to go to the next slide, Brian? So Brian mentioned that there'll be a lot of information and we just want to show you this before because there are 23, possibly 24 bid categories that will be bid. We are bidding out each category to a trade. Some of these, some trades may decide to bid more than one category. Sometimes they'll give a credit, so we could end up with fewer contracts or recommendation or contractors. But these are the categories, so you can see from demolition to electrical site work. And you see one in there, operable partition, that's an alternate that we have for the gymnasium. That was not part of the original bond scope. But since we are bidding out now, we wanted to bid that and see where that price comes in. When we know the hard dollar bids, we can make a decision whether we can take care of that operable partition with, with this bid pack. So if you want to go to the next slide, Brian? So some of you might get, get a little bit bored of me coming back, but I'm always going to come back to the bond app. This is the estimate that we did for you that went to treasury. And the reason I show you this is we are really accomplishing everything in the scope except for the site paving and a little bit of the roofing. So next slide, Brian? So these numbers are a little bit hard to see and we'll get this packet to the, to the board members. But basically, we've got about 7.7 million of the $10 million budget that is, that is in the current scope that's being bid out. And the next slide, Brian? And the budget, we are seeing pressure on it and this is why we do what we do. We'd mentioned the air conditioning, that was originally not one of the budgeted items. And last time we talked, we said it was about 600,000. We are about 570,000 over, but that's with contingencies included. So we'll bid this out and then be able to. So we'll bid this out and then be able to confirm. We typically are a little conservative with our, this is a design development estimate and. Dan could attest to this a little bit, our estimators are very good, but sometimes a little conservative. So we typically find that we pick some up in the bid market. You will see there's a 3% estimated contingency that's in there. There are some things that do come up a little late in design that we don't catch. You know, one example on this would be like the dumpster enclosure. That's something that's required. It wasn't, it wasn't something that we picked up, but it's in there. So we've got a little bit of contingency covered, little items like that. But hopefully we'll, we'll see good bids and we'll come in under our estimate and be back with you with this information. Showing that we're on the bond budget, so with that I would open it to questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Margaret, I'd just like to say thank you for Dan and Jerry. They, they spent hours and hours with us walking through and looking through every. Aspect of this as well as Mr. Koach and Mrs. Napier, or Miss Mango, excuse me. Because oftentimes I'm calling or shooting them an email saying, hey, I need you to check this out or look at this. This is very exciting, which is our first real major bond project. And I just want again to reiterate what they said that as a board, come June 22nd, we're going to be asking to approve seven. Over $7 million in contract, which is a lot of money that the citizens have entrusted, but. As Jerry pointed out, everything in that bond application we have is in this project, so. That's one of the things I'm most proud of that we're keeping our word to our community.
Thank you. Okay, next, the middle school and high school renovation update.
Dan talked a little bit about this. We are in the process of the design. We've gone through at the middle school several. Options that we're looking at for the, of the office layout. We are, we've kind of agreed on using some existing classrooms and moving the office or towards the front of the building. We are now in the design phases where we'll. French's is designing that out to make sure it all fits. Once we get to a scheme that yes, we're all set with. Then it goes to the OCH to make sure it's within the budget that we planned for in the bond application. The high school, we've really looked at that gymnasium addition and the combining that with the weight room. We had a couple ideas and we, going back I guess to the original thought. In the design, so we're just waiting on those now, next set of drawings from French's so we can. Sit down with Keith and Anthony and then Andy and Becky as well as Mr. Reinhardt. And look at the designs and see if that's what we're, what we're trying to accomplish with the bond, so. Those should be coming to I believe in August or September for approval with, from the bid package. We're moving full speed ahead.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, no, thank you everyone for all the work that we're doing to make sure our bond project is moving along. Okay, next, for the very last time, our student board rep report, Lexi.
Thank you. I can't wait for the last time. It's been so long. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to all the board members for welcoming, welcoming me with open arms since day one. I was definitely very nervous to take this position, but it's been one that I'll never regret doing. You guys have given me so many opportunities and you've helped me to grow as a speaker and as a thinker. And this has opened many doors for me, so thank you guys so much. And since the schools are getting back into the swing of things, I actually have a report today. So, at the school, they had their virtual spirit week last week. Staff and students had fun participating and showed their spirit through Zoom meetings. They posted some pictures on Facebook and I was able to see when they did favorite shirt day. And it was great to see all the kids smiling in their favorite outfits. Moving on to the middle school, they wanted to thank all the staff for the teacher and secretary appreciation week. Mrs. Campo is working on a virtual talent show, which I know will be great for all the kids to do. And the RMS staff has begun working on award ceremonies for the end of the year. These ceremonies will be during the normal scheduled times on the district calendar. The Morley and Cherrydale, sorry, the Morley and Cherrydale PTA fundraiser pickup will be this Wednesday and Thursday and parents have been notified. Students and parents who have locker and gym locker belongings have been notified for pickup. The Title I findings report has been filed with the state. And each week at the middle school, teachers still nominate shine candidates and student winners are announced every Tuesday and the award and prize is mailed to them. Moving to the high school, the senior materials drop off and cap and gown pickup are scheduled for next Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The specific time slots for each student are determined by their last names and they've also been posted. The information regarding graduate plans have been posted on Facebook as well, and this will also include senior awards. Though I was not given this information from anyone, I felt it's necessary to acknowledge the McComb All Academic Team. Which includes Emily Samaritt, Bryce Jermaine, Allison Engman, Chloe Cuckoo and Tristan Riggs. And a big congratulations to Nathan Ryan, who is on the All Academic Dream Team. These academic accomplishments should not go unnoticed. And lastly, I would also like to speak on behalf of myself and all seniors who are disappointed in the decision to have a video recorded graduation. With the class of 2020 being one of the smartest classes to graduate from RHS. It is very upsetting that video graduation plans have been made for June when we still have the possibility. Of having a larger ceremony in July or August. Under the current video plans, we will not be able to have any form of a ceremony experience. The top 10 will not be on stage. Tristan Riggs, Jillian Sweeney, myself and any other student giving speeches will be addressing an empty auditorium. And none of our teachers will be there who have helped make this class such a success. Auditorium, I don't understand why our guests are limited to eight when we can still social distance with more. And we do not know what the restrictions will be on those dates. I understand that the board has a lot going on with the bond and football field startup. However, the class of 2020 graduation should be the priority here. We have worked towards this day our entire lives and while there's no easy solution to the pandemic. We hoped more thought would have gone into one of the most important days of our lives. Thank you for giving me your time and patience.
Thank you, Lexi, and on behalf of the board, we want to thank you too for your work as our board rep. You have done an outstanding job. And personally, it has been wonderful getting to know you better. I didn't know you really that well at all. So I appreciate the time that we've had to work together and you have represented us well and the school district, so. We appreciate you. And I just, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna respond to you honey with respect to the graduation ceremony. Your words. We hear what you're saying, but you just got to understand that I don't think there's anybody. Involved with planning the graduation that doesn't think the class is important or anything like that. And I think our administrators have done a really good job of trying to put something together for the students and, and no matter what gets planned. It's going to make somebody not happy, you know what I'm saying, but, but understand that you guys are all very important. And the district is doing the best they can to give you a graduation ceremony, but I appreciate your words and that you spoke them. You're welcome. Does anybody else want to say anything to Lexi? On her last time? Nope. All right.
I just want to wish you great luck and success. Good luck.
Yep. Thanks. She'll be fair.
Thank you, you, Lexi, you have held yourself with poise and did a phenomenal job. I hope you learned a little bit more about the organization and how it operates from a different lens. And I wish you only the best. I know you're going to go on and do great things and you're going to make all of us very proud, especially your parents. You've already made them proud, but I know you're going to do great things.
Okay, moving on, it's a portion of our meeting for public comment. Again, we're doing things a little different since our meetings are held Zoom wise. Normally, if you have a question that you need answered by someone on the Board of Education. You are asked to leave your name and number so that you don't have to do that publicly. If you want an answer to your question, you may email that to me at m teltow@richmond.k12.mu.us. And someone will get back with you. You have three minutes to speak. And again, it's not a question and answer period, but is there anyone who would like to address the board? And Mr. Walmsley, you're gonna?
All right, I see someone raised their hand Tristan, so I'm going to unmute Tristan. Or Mrs. Riggs? Tristan.
Hello? Yeah, yeah, I can.
All right, go ahead.
I'm Tristan Riggs, a senior at Richmond High School. I've been a part of the Richmond Art Program, Theater and Studio Art for nearly. Four years and plan on attending the School of the Arts of Chicago in the fall. The six senior students pursuing the arts have been awarded $1,100,000 in scholarships and have yet to be recognized by the superintendent or the Board of Education. My question is, did you have any intent on acknowledging the six seniors along with their fantastic art teacher Leah Caganek? Who have been awarded more financial aid altogether than the entirety of the senior class of 2019? And I don't mean a Facebook post, I mean a verbal appreciation of how much the art program does for the school. Before you speak, I have another question. What benefits does the Board of Education see in cutting four teachers? Ridiculous that the school wants to build on new classrooms and then cut the teachers who are teaching them. Now, I don't like to assume, but everyone in the Zoom meeting knows that the arts would be the first to go. It is absolutely appalling that you would consider cutting the art teacher after hearing the information I presented in my earlier question. And the same goes for all other teachers in the school district. They do an amazing job bringing light to the school day and putting a smile on students' faces. It is asinine to be considering cutting anyone. I hope you listen and handle the situations accordingly.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Looking for the hands raised first.
I think Cindy Christensen is raising her hand.
All right, thank you. Let me get down there. There's quite a few people, so give me some. Mrs. Christensen, Sydney?
It's Suzy, yeah. I wish I was Sydney and Suzy. I just have something to say really quick, just an update on the banners for you guys. Cause I know Lisa came and presented at the last meeting, just to let you know, I wrote it down, so that's why I'm not, not looking at you. They are a go. We have approval from the city. We have the cost covered by some amazing generous people in town and everybody. Brett Hardy and I have been working really hard. We hope to have them back to him by the end of the week and hung on the day or the day before they were to graduate. So I just want to give you guys all an update and that is where it is with banners. So look on town, up on the poles and you'll see all the seniors.
Thank you.
I'll meet myself now.
Thank you. Okay. Who is it?
Jennifer Riggs.
Oh, there, oh, I'm sorry.
Down at the bottom?
Yep, I think you're unmuted now.
Um, I just want to address, I sent an email to the board and to you and Mr. Walmsley and the. High school principal and assistant principal and I heard back from Margaret. And you indicated to fully intend to acknowledge the all academic team according to your email and I have yet to hear. Actually, I did hear, thank you Lexi for acknowledging them. I mean. Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Castle, for putting it out on Facebook, but again, like my son says. Where's the acknowledgement? Where is it? They, they already got the shaft of not having an awesome banquet that they should be recognized with scholarships and all of that. Where is the acknowledgement for these kids in this class? It's, it's absurd. It's absurd.
Is that it, Ms. Riggs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want to cut you off. Anybody else?
Oh, yep. Anybody I'm missing is you can use also the chat too, in case I'm scrolling through to see. Margaret, let me, I'm going to unmute everybody because I don't know if there's people on the phone that. Are trying to talk and they don't have it and then I'll remute everybody when we're done. Is there anybody else? Anybody else?
Say that's a no.
More time? Okay, I'm going to mute everybody and then I will go through and unmute the board. All right, let me go through and unmute Kyle. Jessica's unmuted. I think that's all of them, Margaret.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to superintendent legislative update.
Okay. To start off, as of today, we have served 35,906, 496 meals, excuse me. As of the delivery of today, since school has been closed with our food service program. You can see the numbers, in fact, the actual number of meals. When you look at it, now some days are higher because we deliver eight meals and some days we only deliver six meals, but you can see the number. Definitely the need is there in the community. I would again like to thank our food service staff, the para professionals, which include media, special education, Title I. The childcare and preschool staff that we reassigned to the food service to help with that meal service delivery. It was pretty remarkable what they've accomplished for our, for our town and our city. The pre-kindergarten, which is the third and fourth grade graduation ceremonies, or excuse me, pre-three year old and fourth grade, four year old. As well as the kindergarten through 11th grade ceremonies will, will run as we had planned on the district calendar. The information we get, we will be doing Zoom award ceremonies for each of the grade levels. That information will come out from the principals very soon in terms of notifying grade levels and students to join. All the dates and times are the same as they were in the published district calendar. The only exception is we had one time for the high school underclassmen awards. We are dividing that up into three sections, so. On May 28th, the ninth graders will be at 12 o'clock, 10th graders will be at 1 o'clock and the 11th graders will be at 2 o'clock. So I will make sure the board has all that information so that you can log into Zoom and watch the, those award ceremonies. As Lexi said, the graduation announcement was released today. Mr. Castle and Mrs. Borwark and myself, along with Mr. Reinhardt and Mrs. Lashbrook and many of the meetings have really spent a long time trying to. many of the meetings, have really spent a long time trying to hold off making this decision. When the school first closed, the district had received, called the college to get a later date, not knowing what to expect. That date in June was canceled. It was actually June 24th. We have, we asked for a July date. They are actually canceling those and not allowing scheduling to occur to that. So at some point, as students begin their fall transition, whether it's going away to school or going into the world of work or armed forces, if they anywhere going, at some point, we have, they're gonna be moving on, and it's gonna be more and more difficult to get students to be able to do a ceremony. And we don't know when, when we'll be able to do any type of large proud gathering. And as Lexi pointed out, the unknown is still in the future. We do know the stay-at-home order is till June 28th. A typical graduation ceremony for Richmond in the last couple of years, when you look at the number of graduates, their families, their friends, the board, the administrators, teachers, everybody that attends, is around 1,200 people. And under current restrictions, that is not, would not be allowed. So we did decide to go with a video graduation. The information was mailed out this weekend. The letters probably haven't arrived yet. We sent, I sent an email to the class of 2020 through school messenger this morning, as well as we did post it on Facebook, trying to get that message out there. We spent through this process a lot of time in consultation regarding the legality of what can we do and what parameters do we have, not only with our district attorney and his understanding of the executive orders and the guidance that's been presented, but also I had a lengthy meeting with the chief of police regarding, is this something that, because he's the enforcer of the law, would be allowed? And we are, in both cases, all in agreement that what we have planned to minimize the number of people in an area of a building, much like we're doing with the redistribution of staff, fits within the guidance of what we're supposed to do. So on June 11th, 12th, 13th, and 14th, every student will be given a time slot to arrive. They can bring up the eight, they'll be allowed to bring up the eight guests in, to watch the awarding of certificates, awards, as well as the ultimate diploma. It will be videotaped, and then it will be professionally put together. We have entered into a contract with Elite Entertainment, who is going to do all the videography for the district, as well as splicing it together. Their work is very good to create a professional product at the end. Ultimately, at the end, every graduate will get a copy of that graduation ceremony. Part of what we looked at is Executive Order 2020-65, the previous one, 2020-35, states that a district has to, shall implement a process to, and it lists several things, issuing grades, award credit, but one of it is issuing a diploma. And so in consultation with the attorney and the police, our plan to issue the diploma fits within the no more than 10 guidance in an area and so forth. So let me kind of explain what the process would be. Again, we're trying to, to the best of our ability, keep a graduation ceremony, allowing the graduates to wear their grounds, get the awards and accolades they deserve, as well as receive their diploma, get their photography, like we would do in the side stage of the auditorium at the Macomb Center, they would get a photograph and so forth. So basically, what we've done is we have created three zones in the building. And if you each, if you think of these zones for the students and their parents, there's actually four zones, which is the stage and those that will be issuing the diploma and congratulating our seniors. But basically, Zone 1 is what we're referring to as, I'm gonna call it the holding area or the staging area. Graduates arrive there with their guests. If they're early, they got a place to sit, get ready. If they're still waiting on people, there's a room or an area that is allowed for them to make sure all their family members are there. They then go from that staging area, which is currently scheduled to be the choir room, the 121 in the auditorium, and then they will move into the auditorium where their guests and visitors will sit in the seating of the auditorium, where the videographer will be set up. The stage will be set up just as a graduation ceremony. The graduate would be announced, the awards and accolades that they would have received in their award ceremony or the convocation, they would be recognized as receiving all of these awards, their cords, their National Honor Society, stoles, everything that they are due and owed would be presented. They would be wearing them, they would cross the stage where they would receive their diploma. At that point, that part of the ceremony for them is done, and they move to Stage 3, which would be normally off to the side of, in the back of the curtains on the stage at the home center, but it would be in the lobby of the auditorium, where every senior will get a cap and gown and diploma photograph. John Marion from Marion Studios will be taking those photographs. He has provided the district a rate that allows us to be able to pay for every student to have that photograph as a keepsake. He would mail it once it's printed. During that time, which is a little different than in a previous, the graduate would actually have an opportunity to have photographs taken from John Marion of themselves and their parents, or if their grandparents are there and so forth. So it does allow them to receive additional photographs. That would be up to the family and so forth, whether they would like it or not. And then when they're done at that stage, they go out to, they leave the auditorium to exit. Again, this is a, it is taking what we can know as a traditional graduation ceremony and basically putting an individual for each student so they can experience it, receive the accolades, the, and then put it together into one video programming or video disc for the families to review. Any speakers that would be given speeches would also be recorded. Those that are giving speakers, the timeframe would be larger for those particular students, because we do not only their graduation, the formal ceremony, but also their speaker, presentation of their speaker. I'm gonna pull up screenshots, bear with me for one second. This screenshot is a snapshot of the day. It's June 11th, 12th, 13th, and 14th. As we were planning this and discussing it, we were trying to, we're trying to adjust for people that are working during the day, et cetera, maybe back to work. So when you look at this, if we start at 2 o'clock on the 11th and go till 8:00 p.m., and 2:00 on Friday, 8:00 p.m., and go all day Saturday and all day Sunday, we blocked out two half-hour, I'm gonna call them lunch breaks, restroom breaks, grab something to eat, but basically, we would be onstage running and videotaping for four days for each graduate. And when you add up all of this, it comes to about 128 slots, and we have just over 120 graduates. So every slot's pretty much going to be filled in order to do this. I will, I will agree with Lexi that this is not, and probably many of us said this is not the graduation that they envisioned, but I think every school district's in the same predicament in terms of trying to put a program or ceremony together for graduates so that they have the ability to be recognized and be honored for their accomplishments that they've done. Again, we, the more information regarding the time slots will be given next week is senior drop-off of materials, their instructional book, their official last day is next, next, this Wednesday actually is their official last day, the 13th. So next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we have scheduled blocks of time where students will drop off their instructional materials, their laptops, get it collected. Mr. Castle and Mrs. Borwark have a system down where students will drop it off and rotate and move to the, another side of the building, the gym entrance, to receive their cap and gowns, et cetera, so that when we do the graduate ceremony, everything's been returned and we've issued all the appropriate garments for the ceremony. Any questions on graduation? I got a couple other items I just want to talk about. Are there any questions on graduation? I think I have everybody unmuted. Some is not unmuted. Hang on a minute. Jessica. Jessica, you're unmuted, I didn't know if you had a question, but no questions at this point? Okay, the next, from a graduation announcement, we are, I am extremely proud of our students and staff with their participation. The virtual learning in the last several weeks of school has been a different environment, but our teachers and staff and our students and parents have all stepped up, and I can't thank them enough. If you think about it, and I mentioned this at the last board meeting, in just a couple days, they've asked us to educate kids in a completely different fashion and pretty much overnight. We couldn't have done this without the leadership of our teachers' union, as well as our administrators, to understand their staffs and their particular needs based on the level. They did a phenomenal job. The, what I've been seeing posted from Facebook, from teachers and students engaged, is just remarkable. It's a different style of learning, and I'm very proud of everything that our community and district has done in this really unprecedented times and historic times. We still don't know what the fall has to offer for us. There's a lot of rumors and mills out there. I will keep the board and the community as soon as I know anything that is legit to report. I don't, I don't want to report things that are hearsay and speculation, because it just adds to people's anxiety and unrest in the community. So we are planning on opening school in the fall as we, as we plan in September, again, unless we're told that we have to operate differently or function differently. On the legislative front, excuse me, last week I had the distinct pleasure of joining the 21 superintendents in Macomb County, as well as the superintendent from the MISD at a meeting with Representative Hornberger, who's one of our representatives in our area. She is the chair of the Education Committee. She spoke very frankly to superintendents, and I really appreciated that. She, as well as all the superintendents, from the perspective of the reality that we're living in now, the revenue that was projected for the state is not there. Those people aren't working, and we know that in our own committee with many people who have been either laid off or have early days or however it's been done, they're not getting a paycheck, there's been unemployment issues and so forth. Just look at our meal count numbers, the need in our community is great. But she was very honest with us, and her perspective was, if you're even thinking about getting any money next year, you're not even thinking the right brain. So she recommended districts plan for multiple budgets, and she threw out some numbers between anywhere from a $300 cut to a $750 per pupil cut. So part of the planning that, as you know, as the board and the community members that have watched the last several board meetings, is to balance our budget, we've got to make some reductions in some fashion. So, which leads me to my last point, which is this Friday is the Revenue Estimating Conference, or Consensus Estimating Revenue Conference is the official name, where the legislators, governors, everyone will come together and all agree upon where they predict our revenue will be for next year. And I think what we need to keep on our radar is really for this year, because they are reporting that the money to finish out the school year, and we only got a couple of weeks left to school, but our paychecks for people who are having a spread out over the summer will continue, but there has been conversations about not getting our full payment this year. So we should know more this Friday, whether the state's gonna look at that, but more importantly, what they're gonna budget for, for next year. What's a little different about this Revenue Estimating Conference, and I just want to recap, usually there's two that are done, one in January and one that is in May. January is really a prediction, how is things, how are things going in the economy, and then where they predict it's gonna be for the end of the year and for next school year. That's usually the number in January, which the governor begins building her budgets, the Senate and House of Representatives build their budgets, and then we go through that whole budget process. Back in March, on March 9th, we were talking a $240 increase per pupil, and in a week's time, things have changed literally overnight. The other thing, what's different about this May one, because May is usually just confirming what they had in January, was with the moving of the filing for income tax deadline to be January, usually by this time, they know what taxes have been filed, what people's income and so forth has been. That deadline has been extended, so this is truly going to be an estimate based on their best evaluation of the economy at this time. I would completely anticipate that the legislative and governor group having another Revenue Estimating Conference, or some type of mini-conference, if you will, after the, in August, after the filing of the income tax deadline, which I believe is July 15th. So this is gonna be interesting on what we hear at the end of the week, it should come out, which is why the need for a special board meeting, because our next formal board meeting would be June 8th, with right now the approval of a budget before just June 30th. So there's a lot of decisions that we've made, and I would just like to say, I want to, I thank the board, I thank my administrative team, Tammy, for constantly running the numbers, being able to at least see the big picture where we are at this moment. I am hopeful that I am overestimating this per pupil cut, and we're gonna have a less, less of a problem to deal with come next week or the June 9th or 8th, when we have to finalize the budget for the June 22nd board meeting. So with that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anybody have anything? Nobody? Okay, I have a couple things. First, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the all-county, all-academic team. Usually, I make these comments at the meeting in April, after I attend the banquet with the students, but unfortunately, this year, they didn't get to have the wonderful banquet. So I just want to recognize Emily Smarick, Bryce Germain, Allison Inghman, Chloe Cuckoo, Tristan Riggs, and Nathan Ryan on a job well done. We had six students this year make the team, and that is the largest number of students Richmond has had on that team ever. Usually, we might get one student, maybe one year we had three, but to have six representatives is a very big deal. I did, on behalf of the Board of Education, send out acknowledgement notes to each one of those students, because I wasn't able to be there at the banquet with them, to let them know on behalf of the board that we're proud of them. Last time at our meeting, we had a parent that brought up about the banners for the graduating class and was looking for help from the school district. So I just wanted to put out there, I know Mrs. Christensen spoke a little bit ago, but the school district was able to make a donation to help with those banners. So I want to thank Mr. Wamsley and Ms. Shad for looking into our monetary situation and being able to help out the senior class with that. It's a really cool idea, and we are looking forward to seeing all of that happen in just a little bit of time. And I just want to, real quick, Lexi, when Lexi was speaking her last, her last report to us, and I responded back to her, and I referred to her as honey, and I referred to her as honey because I've gotten to know her very well, and that was just an affectionate term from an adult to a child, an adult who appreciates and really adores this girl. So that was... So that was why I referred to her as honey. So if that offended anybody, I apologize for that, but I was just showing some true feelings and that was just the way that I did it towards Lexi. That is it for me. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to our action item and it is the approval of the Resolution of Support for the Macomb Intermediate School District Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. We talked about this last meeting, there is a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached resolution in support of the Macomb Intermediate School District MISD Fiscal Year 2021 Budget is presented in the attached documentation.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Hi.
Kyle.
Hi.
Angela.
Hi.
Sheri.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Sandy.
Hi.
And I abstain because I'm an employee of the Macomb Intermediate School District, so I'm not able to vote on their budget. So motion passes. Next, we're going to move on to our monthly budget discussion. This has been a discussion that has been going on for a few months, for those out in the audience that maybe have not been part of our meetings going along. We have gotten information from Mr. Wamsley. We've asked him for information. At our last meeting as a board, there were lots of questions. We are looking at, as a board of education, probably one of the most, I would say dire budget situations than we've had in a very long time with the pandemic that is happening and the lack of revenue at the state coming towards us. So there are things that we have to look at to prepare us for quite possibly what might happen to us in this next school year with per pupil funding cuts. So what we're going to do, as I said, we've been talking about this for a few months. We do have a meeting scheduled, a special meeting scheduled for next Thursday, I believe is the 20th. The Revenue Conference is the 15th, where Mr. Wamsley is going to be getting more solid information so that we can give him direction on the 20th on where to go with our budget. We have to approve a budget by the end of June. So we normally only have one meeting in May, but we are having this extra one because of the situation that's going on and wanting to be able to get as much information as we can.
Margaret, is it on the 20th or the 21st? You said, the 20th is a Wednesday.
Um, that I, if I said Thursday, it's the 20th.
So it's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 20th. Yes, thank you.
Margaret, I, I have a couple other items that Tammy and I pulled together about expenses that we don't anticipate this year that I'd like to share with the board. That was one of the items I, I had that I was going to be into from the last one.
Okay.
So when we look at the expenses compared to la, the FY19 budget, and oftentimes for some of the self-sustaining programs, we roll over that budget unless there's something that is a significant change that would cause us to adjust it. As of today, or what we anticipate by the end of the year, we will be $11,000 less in revenue for childcare, which makes sense if schools closing, people are not using our childcare facilities. We have, right now, we are about 7,500 less in pay-to-participate revenue that we were anticipating. Looking at the energy bills, and I'm talking water, gas, electrical, based on what we've, our usage in the past versus our usage that we've gotten a bill to date, we anticipate having about $7,000 that is going to help, that would actually be part of the roll-up that goes towards our, the fund balance. As you can imagine, postage has increased. We aren't there yet, but I'm anticipating based on the usage rate that we are sending some stuff home to parents that are having trouble with the internet, or maybe it's a need to have stuff at home, we, our postage budget is going to need to be increased about $9,000 to cover that cost. Substitutes to date, and these are substitutes that are paid out of the general fund, it's not substitute dollars that would pay it, be paid out of grant dollars. We anticipate about $3,000 in substitute costs that would roll up. Well, 16,000 in bus fuel that would be left unspent, if you will, during a normal school year. Non-grant instructional supplies is about $8,000 of money we anticipate to be left over in the various accounts. There are some still things straggling in to be paid or invoice, et cetera, but I caution on this one because the office supply budget is probably going to need to be increased and I don't have a sense of that at this moment because if things are purchased on their P card or the, the district credit card purchase card that has, we won't see that bill until the, the statement comes in. Office supplies have gone up purchasing envelopes to mail stuff home, et cetera. This is a large one that by us reassigning staff that was normally charged to the general fund and moving them to the food service, and this is, I'm particularly looking at bus drivers that, that are delivering the meal services, the paraprofessionals that we've reassigned to the food service for that period of time that they are doing the food service. We can actually relieve the general fund about $30,000, and that's payroll, FIC and retirement costs, that now would get charged to the food service accounts. And the money that's, the revenue that's generated by the reimbursement of the meals of the 35,000 meals that we've been serving would pay the, the individuals who've been working in the food service program. So that's, that's a huge plus by the district taking that proactive measure and moving people out of the general fund to help our overall bottom line. Spring sports, the officials and tournaments that we are not, that we normally would have budgeted and paid for, equates to a little over $9,000. So when you do, do the adds and the pluses on this, we have about $45,000 in expenses that aren't going to be, that we do not anticipate them being expenses that would ultimately go towards fund balance. This list is, we are, we're looking at this constantly as Tammy and Judy in the business office are processing payments and, and looking at those accounts. But these are the big ticket items that we identified as having an impact. So our bottom line is, would actually be better because of these expenses. Now, the budget that you're going to ultimately approve, unless you direct or tell me otherwise, most of these supplies or, or costs stay in the next budget. They just roll over with some of the changes or whatever we've agreed upon. But these are, these are dollars that will either be unspent or the budget's going to have to be amended so that it's going to increase when you get the June, the final June, on June 20th, the final FY20 budget. So that actually should be less expensive, so, almost, almost $46,000. I did get a question regarding freshman sports. When I look at, give me a second, I'll pull that up. We, we aren't running very many freshman sports currently, but if, let me pull it up What you see here is on the, on the left side is basically our current freshman sports. We did not run freshman football this year. This may look familiar and several years ago, when we report out whether freshman sports is cost neutral to the district, I would use Mr. Reinhardt and the previous athletic director would do something similar to this. We did not run freshman football. We did run freshman volleyball, freshman basketball. We did not run a freshman girls. We did not run a baseball. And we haven't run a freshman softball team in many, many years. But we always put it on there because if the numbers warrant and we were running a freshman baseball, we would run a freshman softball to be compliant with Title IX. Again, the numbers have to be there. But when you look at currently, we spend about $7,200 in freshman sports and we bring in about $5,900 in freshman sports. So it actually costs the district on a, on a net neutral about $1,300. I just ran a scenario, if you did run everything, and I used the gate receipts and pay-to-participate from previous years to look at an average, if you did run everything with special freshman sports, and I even included softball, though I have no barometer to measure gate or participation because we haven't run a freshman softball, but that would be the coach's fees you'd be obligated to pay. It would cost about $23,000 to run freshman sports. You bring about $12,000 in, we net about $10,000, and with a 10-6, it would cost the district. So, but in our current situation, which is right here, when you take in the revenue that's brought in with the expenses that are paid out, it costs the district about $1,300 to run the two freshman sports that we are currently, at least for the FY19-20 school year, running.
Mr. Wamsley, what is the current cost for pay-to-play? I don't remember.
Is 150, 135. Let me just verify that for you really quick because I don't want to... 150, 135. Yeah, it's 150 for high school, 1, excuse me, 120 for middle school sports. My apologies. And the payoff or the volunteer credit hours that we pay for volunteers is $15 per service credit. There is a different rate for free and reduced lunch students, 105 and 120 at the high school, 105 for free and 120 for reduced, and then 90 and 105 for free and reduced lunch at the middle school.
Did you include in your calculations that people can work off their pay-to-play? Or is that all just rolled into it because you'd have to, would, you wouldn't pay it? You wouldn't, do you pay anybody if you can't get the volunteers to work off pay-to-play?
We, for the, for the items that we run for the, the volunteer, which is usually gate, clock, it's, might be a scorekeeper, for some sports, it might be the books. Mr. Reinhardt and Mrs. Frante, I'll be honest with you, and the middle school staff do a really good job laughing and trying to pull people for volunteers and so we pay them. Now, sometimes you may see a principal, like oftentimes Mr. Castle, will be taking tickets at the gate of a high school football game or another event, so an administrator may take it off. But in this calculation for freshman sports, I did include a reimbursement, and I can pull that back up so you can see it. Let me share this here so you can see it on there. In each of the sports, we do a work-off, so it, I list it as a cost to the district. So in, for instance, volleyball, you pay out about $200 after people pay their full partic, pay-to-participate fee, and then we turn around after the season's over and pay it back. So this is where you see those two lines, the full fee versus what we've paid out.
Okay.
And, and that, that varies by sport and activity in terms of the number of volunteers, how many volunteers, et cetera. And, and then, then the booster club has their own payout for people who work the concession stand and stuff for them, and they do that separate from the district.
Okay.
The other items, I think I, I responded back to all, I, I believe, I do have to get, there was a question that was brought up about middle school athletic attendance I, I asked Mr. Reinhardt for the high school, I did not ask him for the middle school, so I will get that to the board. I think I gave you the last three years or two years and the current year for the high school, I will get you that for the middle school.
Have you heard anything about the budget being pushed back, the due date?
I have heard, and it's in our, with our legislative liaison, some discussion that the budget that approved, that the board would approve, there, I don't know if it's that conversation at the floor level of the House and Senate, but there has been a conversation about, do you move this because of the unknown right now? Do you move the ability of schools to approve a budget at a later point so that they can get, have a better Revenue Estimating Conference, as I spoke to, maybe like in August, end of July, beginning of August, they have a better handle on the numbers? At some point though, before July 1, as a board, you'd have to authorize me to begin spending dollars July 1 through, if they did move the budget. So you, you, if that was a scenario, I could envision you'd have to approve a, whether it's a two-month budget, and it might be just whatever payroll and whatever we need to actually operate that two months. But at some point, it's going to push us up to the start of school and it becomes then challenging to staff the buildings if we're making decisions about staffing right before school starts. So I have heard that conversation, Board Member Zubi, regarding, are they, are they considering? It has been a longstanding argument among the superintendents and legislators, why the school district's budget doesn't mimic the state's budget. Their budget runs October 1 to September 30th, as we all learned in this last one with the state shutdown of, of areas and last-minute deals, et cetera. The challenge with that is we're already a month into school and you're approving a budget and classes have already started, kids have already got to know their teachers, and if you're, you have to make adjustments, you'd be pulling people out of their classrooms or, or having to wait till the following year. I think that the, and I, I know the board knows, just for the listening audience, the challenge at any other time, like I said, on May, on March 9th, we were planning on adding money to the budget, looking at $240 per pupil increase was what we were talking about, and now we're looking at anywhere from a reduction from 300 to 750, whatever the dollar amount is, that, that's also going to be decided by the legislator and governors.
Isn't there some new information that's going to come out on May 15th as well? Isn't there a meeting?
May 15th is the Revenue Estimating Conference, and that's where they will estimate, project what the revenue is going to be, and then they will, from that time, they will say, this is how much money or how much money we need to take back from schools. They will estimate the revenue that goes into the school aid fund and the general fund. And the school aid fund, number 2%, 2 cents on every tax dollar goes into, or on all the taxes, a sales tax goes into the school aid fund. If people aren't buying stuff, there's less revenue going into that fund. If people aren't driving that gas tax, there's less revenue going into both the general fund and school aid fund. So with the economy being shut down, everything is taking a toll. Everything's been affected.
I wanted to thank you, Mr. Wamsley, for getting all the information to us in such a quick fashion and in such a concise way. It really made it a lot easier for us to be able to understand the scope of, you know, what we're looking at. I'm, I'm hearing as well that it's going to be somewhere between 750 and 1,000, and I also appreciate that you had your information together to be able to easily move from one of those numbers to another. So as we hear more on the 15th, will you then be reaching out to us with what you've heard as well?
Absolutely. The 15th really for the, the board and really the community, every district, is really the day that we're all waiting for, which is this, this Friday, to see where, how much revenue estimating... to see where, how much revenue estimating they're, they're projecting to be less in next year's school aid fund. Which would then, we could easily do a calculation by if it's less than a billion dollars and you divide it by the number of kids that attend public schools, about a $660 per pupil cut unless we found the money otherwise. I do want to say to the board, and Tammy and I are working on it, we'll be, we'll be working on it this weekend. Last Friday, the grant opened as part of the federal stimulus package. There is dollars that have been allocated for schools, just as they were for businesses and the checks that people may have received in the mail. We're ready to try to help people out. Those dollars, they're, they're basically, if you think of, there are two pots of money. There is a pot of dollars that was allocated using the Title I formula, which is based on how many free reduced lunch students we have. And just as a side note, we are encouraging people to fill out a new application because many people's situations have changed. And that application goes to October 1. So when we're back at school, you may right now qualify for free lunch. And maybe your job gets back and you don't qualify. But at least through the month of September, you would receive no-cost meals for your students while that adjusts. It's important because however many free reduced lunch students we have, that determines the allocation. So there's a pot of money that's been allocated using the Title I formula. And for Richmond schools, we have received 188,881 or something, 818, something like that. It's just under 190,000. We are in the process of getting from off the state website and the guidance of how those dollars can be spent. So my hope is that if we, if we can spend some of those dollars to help offset any of these costs, we could do that. These are one-time dollars. We have the ability to keep them, I think it's through September 30th of 2022. Am I right, Tammy? 2022? So that allows us to carry those funds over so we could spend part of it this school year, part of it next school year, et cetera. Again, we will be bringing you that because that just was really released last week and officially opened up on Friday. And there's a lot of questions districts have about how those dollars can be spent. The other pot of money, which I believe is about 89 million, is allocated to the state legislator and governor to determine how they're going to allocate that. So our hope is that we're going to get a portion of that from a school district to help up, offset some of the costs we have now incurred because of the shutdown. Little things like masks and buying additional gloves that we needed, additional hand sanitizers, additional payroll times of sanitizing buses in certain areas of the building, helping offset. So, so really think we have two-dollar amounts out there that we have 180, 190,000 that we're going to be bringing to you as well as this other pop. But the other one that 80, I think it's 89 million, isn't it, Tammy?
Yes.
That, we have not gotten anything yet from the legislature or governor, how that's allocated. But as soon as we do, I will, I will let you know on that one. We did receive, we applied for a $50,000 food service grant. We received $10,000. As part of doing the summer programming or the meetup and eat up right now, we had to purchase some additional coolers and we purchased an additional milk cooler and some racks and so forth. That grant will help, will pay for those items that we had to purchase to operate. So I want to thank Tammy and our food service director, our former one, John Estrada, as well as our new one, Kathy Guinea, for that process. Because it's a lot of hoops to jump through to get it through. But we did receive $10,000 for that grant. Any other questions or any, anything you want me to look at on the screen to see or any other question you may have?
All right, let's, let's start with our board members. We've got our information. We've put our stuff together. This is to give Brian an idea of where we stand on things that we've been talking about. So after the revenue conference on Friday, when he gets information and when we have that meeting on the 20th, he's able to put something together for us based on what we're telling him. So we're each going to take a turn and, Chris, would you go first?
I will. I just had a technical difficulty and lost some of my notes, so I apologize. I'm going to be going from memory here. So as I said before, I appreciate you getting all that information to me. I was concerned a little bit about the cost of freshman sports and being able to continue with that. I think that that would be an area that I would feel comfortable to look a little bit deeper at as being a cut. I also am assuming that there will be some staffing changes that will have to take place, which I know are always difficult. But with that, I do understand all of that. And that's really all I have at this time.
Hey, Sandy? Well, I don't really know that I have anything, anything really to add at this point after all the information that we've already received. I like the fact that we have, that he, that Mr. Romesley is giving us several different options of things, of the possible numbers that we might be looking at, I guess. So I mean, I'm just, I've just asked if he would continue to do that, I guess.
Okay, so just Chris and Sandy, before we go further to everyone else. So Chris, you said, one of the things you were looking at to cut. Is there, is there anything that you are, either one of you so far are absolutely adamant you would like us to hang on to? Or, you know, like Chris, you mentioned the freshman sports might be one thing. Just so he kind of has a little bit of an idea there.
Yeah, the social studies improvement, I was wanting to hang on to that, definitely. CTE programs, I think that those are important. They set Richmond apart from other areas. I think that we would definitely want to keep our arts going as well, any of our STEAM programs, so that we were not losing out on those.
Okay. Yeah, and I would, I would agree, I guess, with what Chris just said as far as like keeping, you know, like keeping the CTE programs is important to me. I think it's important to the students. I know that there's going to probably have to be some changes made and then tough and whatnot. But I don't have anything else I think that isn't worth looking at.
Okay. So in your mind, everything else is?
I think that we kind of, yeah, we have to look at all of that, I guess.
Kyle?
I am not interested in getting rid of anything CTE related. I think the K through 12 theater program needs to stay. I would be interested in, you know, we've got 80,000 allotted for the turf field replacement. We've got 10 years of 80. I would be okay with nine years of 90. I just think we're, I just think we're in a, an anomaly for, I mean, at least a year. But I think that's something that can get pushed at least a little bit down the road because we have more immediate needs. I do think there's, I just think it's going to be as big, I think it's going to be bigger than we think. And I know there's going to need to be cuts. I'm hoping the meeting on Friday is, is better than anticipated. But I, I just, I don't have high hopes.
So with along the lines of where Sandy said, you think everything else needs to be looked at?
I'm open, I'm open to everything else.
Okay.
Margaret, I failed to mention that. I would also recommend us holding off, putting that money aside for that field at this, for this timeframe. I mean, it's something that we could definitely look at again next year and should. But I do believe that this is not, or hopeful that this is not going to be a continuing event into next year.
Kyle, was that it?
Yeah, for right now. I'll have more, obviously, after Friday, we all will, but.
Right, okay. Angela?
Yeah, actually, I agree with Kyle as far as the turf replacement, maybe postponing that the nine, the nine years rather than, you know, postponing it for a year being that we are under the circumstances we are. I also feel like the bus replacement, maybe we could postpone that a year, you know, until we find out a little bit better about next year. And then I guess maybe not hiring any new positions, trying not to fill any positions. And then, of course, I would never want to cut, hopefully not cut employees and not cut programs for kids. I know that we use our current student count formula to get the student count. But we could also see a huge savings if we decided to use our same student count from last year. I don't know if that's legally possible or allowed. But that's something that I would maybe be interested in looking at again as our student count.
You mean for budget?
For our budget. How many people, right now, I think he's budgeting us for 1,449 students.
And what, what do you, because I think that's a best-case scenario.
But that's based on?
If we, well, if we, he took us down from 11.82 from last year's student enrollment. And that would give us at least $88,000 there.
And you think more kids are coming to school next year than?
No, just the same amount that are here now, not more. That we use, the same number we used from last year.
I would just, I disagree. I, I think that number is a best-case scenario.
Yeah.
Okay.
So can I, can I just comment on that real quick? Angela, as, as an enrollment number, as a board, you can choose, what the expectation is that you're making a reasonable assumption. We don't know what our student number is going to be until the students are actually there in September, as you all know. So what you're proposing, that could be. We could, we could propose as a board, we're going to keep current numbers. As I've done in the past, I just moved kids up or the FTE number up. And then I assumed a certain kindergarten number because we know those kids already live. But that isn't, that is an option as a board. You, on the enrollment, you can make that assumption. On the flip side, really with any prediction, is if you don't get that enrollment, then it becomes hard to reduce it because you've already started your budget in July. And if you have to reduce staff because you didn't get that enrollment, it's easier to add staff. But I, I understand where you're coming from, from that angle.
You happen to have the numbers of like, every year when you make these predictions, how spot on they are compared to what they actually ended up being?
It would take me a little bit because I'd have to go back and pull each board presentation from each year and then compare it to what would the audited numbers were. But I could get that.
We've done, we've done better estimating in the last, I don't know, three or four years. You know what I'm saying? That the, these numbers have been pretty accurate, that we haven't lost as many kids as we thought we're gaining kids in that. And it, it really is a crap shoot.
I would, sorry, what?
No, I just think that we do a good job of estimating.
Have we seen much of a difference in addition of students for the kindergarten roundup? You know, I know that was kind of, right now, people are just focusing on finishing up this year. But the kids that would be going to kindergarten, do we have any increased numbers there?
I would say at this point, we're about, and I will get the exact number from Pam when she's in, we're about where we were last year at this time. And we had 111 kindergartens, I think, when we started the school year. It was 105 when we started the school year. So we're on track to be about the same number. Just in enrollment, the one thing I was going to add is there are certain times that when we make a prediction or a estimate and there's an anomaly or something happens that nobody expected. Like for instance, we got a, a larger number of students from St. Pete's than we've ever had in, I believe it was grade five or maybe six. I'm forgetting, I'm drawing a blank off the top of my head. We didn't predict that and it was just an anomaly that happened. So either something happened at the school that made the parents choose Richmond or maybe they were just ready, I don't know. But normally, we don't, we didn't get that many. This year, we did get more students than we anticipated, anticipated, so.
Angela, is that good? Are you good?
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, yep.
Thanks, Brian. I am eager to see what the 15th comes around and shows us as far as what we're actually going to be budgeted for. I am on board with moving the $80,000 into future years. I am also interested in maybe seeing some more numbers on, under the FC 111 for the elementary school about the additional teacher. Seeing if, if we really will need an additional teacher for this school year for second grade.
Are you looking at projected class sizes then, based on current numbers, Jessica?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And if we, and if we choose not to add that, what would the student teacher ratio be? If we choose not to add that?
Okay.
Other than that, that was the most recent thing I have noted for a little more information, plus what we're going to find out on the 15th.
Sheri?
I'm looking for more clarification for the 15th too. But freshman sports is something I'd like to look into.
Are you looking into a cut to it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, either, yes, just like previous years, making it be self-funded due to fund, by fundraisers or whatnot. I'm also looking for as little impact on students as possible, which means class sizes, teacher cuts, anybody connected with the buildings at all possible. I'm okay with the turf amount being spread out, not including this next year. Also, the bus allocation. Because I believe is the, the bond is covering some of those, is that right?
That is correct.
I want to keep the majority of the CTE programs. But there's a couple that like have lower enrollment that if need be, you know, I'd consider cutting them. But the majority of them, I'm good with. Also, the academic Schedule B, I'm not interested in cutting at all. That's, yeah, that's about it. I might have a couple other questions about some other possible cuts in other departments, but that I can email to you.
What, what do you mean by that?
Well, like, like I said, I, I want as minimal cuts to anybody that's affected by, or working with students. So there are some other areas that, you know, might be able to have cuts.
I think we all want minimal effect on the students.
I know we all do.
Do you mean like dependent on the student count that comes in or the anticipation of that?
No, just some other like facility-type positions, you know, that could be spread out or not, you know, doesn't directly affect the students and the buildings.
That haven't been addressed so far? Okay.
I mean, I feel coming off a pandemic, we need as, as much consistency and normalness going back next year for every building.
Is that it?
Yes.
Good, okay. Okay, I, I agree on the, the TURF and the bus allocation. The reality is, we were going to use that money, we were going to use what we thought was going to be that wonderful enhancement millage to be able to help us with that, and that's not going to happen. So I, I agree, I think that's a would, I also do not have an issue with the summer school being reduced. I'm not interested, I'm a big fat no on the IAM program for a lot of reasons, but one being that while it's $35,000, it could be, it could be a loss of more than that if those students that are going to the IAM, because they can't, but they choose to go do something else. I think that that's, I think we need to, to keep that.
For some reason, I thought we were already in like some type of an agreement with them. That's why I didn't really talk.
Well, right, but remember, I asked Brian that, and, you know, about, yeah, because we are, we're in that consortium or agreement, and I didn't get an answer back on whether we would be faulted for that. So I, I don't want to get rid of it anyways, but it may be, you're right, Chris, it may be just that we, we can't get rid of it anyways because of the, of the contract that we're in.
The IAM, the, the issue that we're facing over the last several years are two slots. If you sleep two slots every year, we should have eight students going to the IAM.
Right.
Over the last several years, we haven't filled those slots. So our numbers have gone down, and I believe we have an 11th grader, and there's, there's less than, I think there's only four kids over there, 11th grader and three in another grade. Though, we have more kids who want to go into it to give us back to that eight slots that we are allocated as a district, which is why our expenses on the IAM are going to increase next year because we have more kids going, scheduled to go to the IAM program. Except this year, we have nobody graduating from the IAM program this year.
So is it optional for us, or are we in some type of a contract?
There is a, there is a consortium agreement, what I don't have an answer with, and I, and I asked it, to look at, we're, we're in a consortium agreement with, there's 18 districts total, that based on enrollment, we each get a certain number of slots. I think, you know, Warren Gassali gets, I think, 19 slots, we get two, I think, New Haven gets two slots every year. So we should have at every, any given time, have eight people in the IAM program.
No, I get all that, I just wondered.
They're the same.
Yeah, I just wondered if we had a, had a commitment that if we had students interested, were we required to something?
There are districts who take the position that if you are not, have not been in the district your entire career, you are not eligible for the IAM. Our district, we, we have students that are current eighth graders in Richmond right now, they have the first slots. Then we have districts, they are current Richmond residents, but they may be attending a parochial school or homeschool, get the second slot because they're paying taxes to Richmond schools. And then the third slot, which we have not gotten to since, since I've been here, is school of choice.
But the question is, if we were to eliminate that $35,000, are we in a contract that we can't do that? That's the question.
And I, and I will, I will ask again tomorrow, I did not get an answer on it originally. That 35 is in addition to what we're currently paying.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I make sure. All right, but I, I will ask again tomorrow.
Okay. I'm not interested at all cutting any of the CTE programs, anything to do with the theater or STEMO robotics. We've worked too hard to get those programs up and running, and if there is a way, we can not touch those. The academic Schedule B, I'm not really interested in that unless we were looking at, we were going to do something that equals athletic Schedule B. Because to me, they're, they're both important, and we always seem to go after the academic Schedule Bs that never seem to mean as much as the athletic, and they do. So if we're gonna, that's where I'm coming from on that, that I'm not interested in doing it, but if it's something we have to do, then we have to equally do on the athletic end. The, the secretary, the line 241, the reduction in the hours for $20,000 savings. There's a part of me that, $20,000 in the grand scheme of things, I, I don't know that that is so impactful, but it's not out of the realm for me, but I would like us to maybe think different about that. The same going for the para-hours, that was a $20,000 amount, too. The Board of Education 231, that amount was 82.9, and Brian, you were looking at reducing it by $20,000?
Correct.
Correct?
That, yes.
And then on, just again, to make it clear, the Board of Education, this is not money that the Board of Education gets. We don't get paid money, this is items that just fall into this line item. One of them is our dues. And Brian, there's, there was the MASB, Metro Bureau, and yeah, what are, what are those other two? Explain to everyone what those dues?
Metro Bureau is a agency that, they do multiple things for district. They're primarily the tri-county area, Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County, though they do incorporate other districts in the neighboring counties to those three. They provide training opportunities, they'll bring in an attorney to talk about a workman's comp, or they'll bring about teacher evaluation, changes in the law, or they brought in stuff about the, and forgive me, I'm drawing a blank on the name, but the COVID Family Care Act that was passed.
Oh, okay.
And I'm drawing a blank on the acronym. So they'll bring in people, and as a member, we either get that service for free, or they will do it at a reduced rate, maybe it's $20, to send a staff member to that, that training.
Okay.
A lot of times, it may be 504 regulations change or, or special ed. They also do services, so if I'm looking for, okay, what's the, I'll just excuse me, what's the average superintendent in the county and, or the tri-county area? They will pull that data together for boards and superintendents and be able to use it. We use them a lot of times to gather information for negotiations. The, the tri-county alliance is a, they, they promote public schools among our legislators. They hold multiple conferences where they bring in legislators and try to educate them on what really goes on in schools before you make decisions. Too often, our legislators don't do that. It's a, they, they run training sessions for staff, too. It's a, they're an advocacy group for public schools, both of them. Tri-county Alliance, you can also use to help with marketing. They've got an arm that will help put districts together that are, don't have the funds for a marketing director, but give you ideas and help you suggest ways to maximize your dollars. So it's a resource for the district.
Okay. And then I know part of in there is our Neola policies, and I know that months ago, Brian, you talked about maybe moving away from Neola for our policies and going through our law firm to do them. And I know that there, you said there would be a savings, I don't know, is it immediate savings if we change it? Or if it is a savings like a year from now, something like that, but is that, is that an option?
The, the transition to go to TRU, there's, there's one-time costs, which are almost equal to what we're paying with Neola. The savings really falls in year two. The, the annual updates for policies for Neola is around roughly about $35,000. For TRU, it's $2,500.
Okay.
So year, year two is where you get the savings for that. I would strongly recommend the board move that, this, this is, these are the attorneys the board is selecting to use to represent them. So they know the policies, they've written it according to the law, and how they're going to defend the district if we're ever in that situation. There are many school districts who are moving, they typically have not been in the policy realm. They, they've now gotten into it because of, Neola is a national company. So when they write policies, they're not only writing for Michigan, but school districts in Indiana and, and so forth. And sometimes the policies are too broad or encompass ideas that aren't a Michigan idea. It's more of an, another state's idea, where TRU's policies are for the state of Michigan.
Okay, so that's something you're recommending for the board?
I, I would recommend it. The board is good with switching policies. I can send the, the link to a district if you want to look at them, that we get that ball rolling because there is a process that we take, it's about a month-long process. And if we wanted to start this July 1, we'd have to start by, by June to get that process rolling.
Does that interest anybody?
It wouldn't cost us anything.
I talked about it before.
I'd like to see what they are.
Yep.
Are they similar, are they similar to Neola?
Yeah, it's a similar format, they have like a, a zeros for board, a 1,000. Their, their numbering is a little different than Neola where 1,000 was, I believe, or 2,000 was administrative, 3,000 was support staff, 4,000 was, I believe, professional staff.
Are they the same policies, though, or is it something?
Yeah, they, they're, 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 well, they're, the policy is written by TRU. So the language might be a little different, but there's a policy like on teacher evaluation, whether you're in Neola or TRU, and they're going to have one. There's a policy on superintendent evaluation, there's a policy on Title IX compliance. So they're going to have, the language might be a little different, but most, most of the policies are, I would say, are written, especially with, with Neola, are written with the law, the language from the law. It's where you get in the administrative guidelines where it says, how are you going to operate as a district that, that you make it unique to your district? The challenge with Neola is there are literally thousands and thousands of policies, and, and nobody can be updated on all of them, it's just impossible.
So you said it's something you could send us, we could look over to, before we decide?
What I would do is I would send you the link of a school district that has already implemented, the policies are online, you can look at them. You see the format, it's, it, like I said, it's, it's, the format's similar to Neola, you're going to have it broken down by different categories, and within that category, you'll have various, you'll have student policies, the 5,000 in Neola are student. You'll have business policies, like a procurement that we have to do, those are all in the Neola policies. It's just, it's written to meet the letter of the law from the TRU's perspective.
And the benefit is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
I was going to say, how long would you anticipate that transition to take place for them to rewrite that to our, their language?
They, they need a, they, they, I sat through a webinar last week to get more information, and it was actually a webinar for districts that are starting it. It's about a month process, because there are certain things you got to go through, and, and they identify, there's, there's a checklist they give you that you have to identify. And I'll just use like a Title IX compliance officer. You've got to put a person's name, so they will say, give us the name of the person, and then we, they will insert that in the policy. Sexual harassment, there's certain things that by law you have to have. The asbestos person, which I believe last year at this time, you appointed me as the asbestos person. That would be identified in the policy. But I, I will send, I could send the board the link, and so you see the actual district, and it would look the same, it would just have our name on it. And like I said, if we, if we customize any of the policy, which, the process would go the same as Neola. They're going to give us a, an updated policy, and then you as a board got to decide, do you want these items or not in the policy? And I would make recommendations, these are what I'm recommending to you, but ultimately, you have to make a decision what you want in that policy. But I can send you the link.
Okay. And Brian, does that mean that this would not be any additional cost at this time? If we did decide to switch right now, we wouldn't have any startup fee or anything like that?
The, the money that we currently have budgeted.
For bringing Neola?
The money that we currently have budgeted for Neola, if we roll that budget into next year, would, I, I think there's about a $500 on math that's correct in addition for the first year. After that, it is less money for the renewal than what we currently are paying for Neola.
So it would cost us $500 if we did it this year, or any year for the first year?
No, it's just this year, and then the second year is where you get the savings because you're not paying that angle. And the difference between Neola and TRU is if there's not, if there's not major updates, TRU won't, does not bill you for. Where Neola bills you every, we have a fall update, we have a spring update. Whether you adopt them or not, we pay for that update. We typically do the policies in August, and then I bring another group. Where, that, that, that potential could be a big savings. If there's, and there, there's years that there's not major updates, so they, they would, they don't bill us. I, the biggest benefit is the attorney that's representing you knows the policy. They're not learning a new, another company's policy, but.
Yes, I think it's a great benefit, I just, incurring new expenses at this time. I know it's only $500, but I don't know, I'd maybe be more interested in looking to switching next year rather than this year. But I know you're going to send us some information, so maybe we'll talk about that at a later time.
Okay, and that, my, my only last thing, Brian, with respect to the 231 line item, I know you're reducing it by 20, but I, I would really like to see it, that dollar figure be like 60,000. Somehow figure out a way to trim some more, because I think when you're, we're talking about the cuts that we have to make, this is an area that we could trim up, and it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect kids.
So in the 231, the board account, you're looking for it to be cutting out 60,000?
No, no, I want it to be cut down to 60. You've cut it down to 62.9
Okay.
with that $20,000 cut.
All right, I will, I will look at that with Tammy, and I will.
Can I say one more thing? Can I add something?
Yeah.
The social studies curriculum, can we possibly wait on that a year? Just because we don't know what school's going to look like when we get back, is it a good time to start a new curriculum? Or is it something we have to?
I think that was Brian's suggestion.
Oh, to wait?
Well, it, it's.
Oh, was it? I'm sorry.
I think so, because Chris, right, because Chris was saying she's, she's maybe not wanting us to do that.
Oh, I thought Chris said she wanted it. So I misunderstood if that was the case.
Yes, me too.
Did I mishear you, Chris?
I think that that needs to be looked at as we move forward, the curriculum, but it can wait until next year.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, so Brian, does that kind of give you a little bit to work with? And, and I'm also like Kyle, and a couple other people, I'm good with the other things that are on there being looked at.
Okay, so at our 20th, what, once we know that per pupil dollar amount?
Right.
Or at least where, where they're leaning towards and so forth, we can literally take this chart and put that in there to see what our bottom line is.
Correct.
And then if there are certain things like the TURF replacement, that was, many people suggested that, we can zero that out to see how that affects our bottom line.
Yeah.
The bus replacement, I believe there was three of them, you know, obviously, you know, at some point, the board does need to put money, but because of the bond right now, we're in a position where the bond can be paid for them rather than putting aside. So I can zero, easily zero those out, and then you can see what that bottom line is in terms of, I don't remember who said, of trying to protect as much as close to the students as possible, to see, make those decisions then at that point.
Yep, I think so. Everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we are looking to have that meeting on Wednesday, the 20th. Got that correct. So, you know, like I said, this is just a, this is a very. Um, so, you know, like I said, this is just a, this is a very interesting and difficult time for the school district, and, um, I think it's good to hear from everybody on the board, as we've been hearing, um, from Mr. Wamsley, different stuff on where everybody's coming from, because ultimately, we're the ones that have to decide what we're doing and what we're not going to do. So I appreciate everybody on the boards, the work that they did preparing for tonight.
Mark, can I just make one quick statement?
Yes.
I'm just kind of reading, I want to make sure it's clear for people. The meeting that we have on the 20th is an open board meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't say that it wasn't.
I'm looking at some of the, the comments, and I just want to make sure that it, this is all done in public, nothing can be.
Oh, yeah.
Legally.
Oh, yeah.
In quotes, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I guess, I would just assume that was a given, that we do everything, uh, publicly, since that's how we operate. But, um, and I didn't say anything about a closed meeting, so I didn't, uh, um, I'm not, I'm not reading too much what people are saying at the bottom, so, yes, it is an open meeting, and forgive me, everyone, when did we, did we talk about a 6:30 start?
Yes. I think we talked about a start, didn't we? Okay.
I think we did, I think we said 6:30.
6:30?
And it'll, for everyone in the viewing audience, uh, it will be posted, and all the information to be able to attend via Zoom will be, will be posted. Okay, are we good? All right.
I mean, we still have, we, we're still talking about this, it's not, right, everything is just a.
Yes, everything is talking until the last meeting in June, when we approve the budget. Yes, it's still conversation. It's better conversation once the, the revenue conference happens on Friday, where we get a better idea, and we're not saying, is it going to be this amount, is it going to be, we're going to get a way better idea? But yes, it is conversation until we vote on the budget at the end of June.
Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned at 9:34 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.